I think we've got more paper on this table than we've had in about 20 meetings.
That seems like it, doesn't it?
And we are back and call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. So, having already done the flag salute, we will open with public input. So if there's anyone here for public input, you can come forward.
How about the Lord's input?
Let's have it.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this wonderful commission that we have and we thank you for their leadership, taking time out to serve this great city. Thank you for our leaders that we have and our city government for all the work that they did. Thank you for blessing Pittsburgh to prosper, to grow, and to be a place where everybody wants to call home. We just ask your blessing to continue letting us grow and to reach out to others and be a good neighbor, community services, and to make this city continue being a shiny light on a hill that many people will come and see what we have to offer. I am proud to be a Pittsburgh person and I thank you, Lord, that I have that opportunity to be here. Now bless this meeting tonight and bless it with your blessings and may your spirit guide all the decisions that are made. We ask these things in thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to share for public opinion or public input? Not? Oh, go ahead.
Evening. My name is Tim Kunderger. I'm at 313 North Broadway. Just going to make a few comments on the design standards that are going to be proposed tonight. I've been on planning and zoning and the Board of Appeals for seven years. In that time period when I first started, I had made a suggestion about some facades on the main roads, particularly Broadway, Centennial, things like that. And it was shot down because it was told to be too expensive to the property owners. What's being proposed is 10 times more expensive than what I had proposed, which was simply to require that a certain percentage of the storefront be rock, brick, you know, things like that for new construction, similar to what the airport has. The design standards that are being put forth now, you are trying to replicate 100-year-old buildings instead of renovate them. That cost is going to be immense, trying to match mortar, you know, signage requirements. It's just, it's too much, I feel, for the average person and the average business owner in downtown to be able to handle. The next thing I'd like to point out is that a lot of buildings in downtown don't adhere to this standard to begin with. Popular buildings like 505, Bamboo, Bella Rosa, Broadway Law Office, Kansas Teachers Credit Union, BMO Harris, Lorry's Bridle, even my own office wouldn't have passed these standards. You know, these are good-looking buildings. I think all this is going to do is hinder any development in downtown because the cost is just going to be too high. If someone's looking at building downtown, they have $100,000 renovation costs just because of having to be historical versus going somewhere else and having that cut in half, it doesn't make sense. You know, in my opinion, the standard only benefits a few people. It's going to hinder everybody else in downtown. I feel to say you should probably, if they're going to do this, would be to scale it back severely to something more legitimate, something, you know, better suited for the Pittsburgh area. I feel that those people who are going to be in charge of enforcing the design standards should not be those people that own buildings or businesses in downtown because there is a strong possibility for bias. If you have one property owner doesn't care for another property owner and they get together to change their building, the chances of the person on the board shooting down the other person's business is pretty high. I think that responsibility should go more towards the planning and zoning committee or a committee formed that has nothing to do or has no affiliation with downtown businesses. I think probably a better plan would be to bring back things like the facade grant or offering low-interest loans to businesses that do want to improve their buildings. And if a business shows up and says, "I need $25,000 to improve my facade," and the city wants to do a low-interest loan for that, that they can implement design standards there. But you can't go through and tell every business owner they can't do anything to their building. That's what I'd say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public opinion time? If not, we will close out.
Got one more.
One more. Go ahead. Come on up.
My name's Larry Fields. I live at 1704 North Locust. My wife and I own two properties downtown Pittsburgh. Neither of the properties, to be clear, are in this, are in the zone the way it's currently set up. I'm on the downtown board. I'm also on the construction side of it. We've had a lot of meetings in the last year, dozens of them. You know, it's supposed to be, we were going to meet once a month. We're meeting like, seemed to me like three times a week, it seemed like. It was getting out of hand. I felt like it was a, trying to tell somebody how to take care of their own property. If somebody buys property in Pittsburgh and they own it and they're going to maintain it, I think they have a right to do not anything they want, but most, you know, be able to take care of it and maintain it. But the problem is, some people don't. Next door to the property, I own the Fourth and Locust, the Mackey Clemens Headquarters Building. Building next door to it fell out in the street. No one was injured, but that building fell down. The city's currently tearing down a building, what, two blocks away, another one on Broadway. What ended up with safety standards really turned out to be a safety issue. We argued, argued too. No punches were landed, but we argued. Paint, they're going to tell you what color to paint. That's gone. They're going to tell you you couldn't do certain types of things. That was really silly. Or I thought they were silly, excuse me. Some of them didn't think they were silly. And I'm just giving you my opinion. I thought they were silly. But it ended up being pretty decent. This isn't perfect. It doesn't include everything. And like I said, the two buildings that we own are not included in this zone currently. But the Frisco Depot, Passenger Station and Depot, we bought that facility. It had 1/3 of the roof was gone, 1/3 of the floor was gone, had 84 broken windows, but they were covered nicely with cardboard and particle board. That looked nice. Had a tree growing up through the roof 20 feet. The tree was 24 inches in diameter. And the city did help me. I got $20,000 from the city after the end of it. That was a tiny percentage of what I spent, by the way, but don't tell my wife, please. She's not sure how much we spent. But if these standards had been in effect, if this was all in effect when we were doing that building, I'd have done everything we did. I wouldn't have changed anything. I might have complained. Now, I'll tell you, I would have complained, probably because I'm pretty good. I'm getting better at that too as I get older, but I really would have done the same thing. It isn't, this isn't trying to tell somebody what they have to do. It is standards. It is not set in stone. Codes will have to do it. Mr. McGinnity will have to go through this, I'm sure, quite a bit, make sure it's legal. A number of attorneys on Broadway have their buildings painted and things. I'm sure they're going to have some input as well. But this turned out to be a lot better than I thought it was going to be. I was going to be opposed to it. I had my mind made up. But as we got through it and went, really, lots and lots of meetings and got through the thing, it's not too bad. If you spend a lot of money on a building, you want to make sure the building next to you or close to you is at least maintained. And the problem is the roofs. If you let a roof go, the building's going to go. You've got to have some way, and I agree with Tim, maybe somebody, somehow you can help at least freeze some taxes or do something. Do something to help the individual because if he's sitting on an empty building, he has no income. He's still paying utilities and water and still has some maintenance. They need some help. We had a lot of arguments about a theme for Pittsburgh and that really got out of hand. Nobody, World's Fund has a theme. I don't think Pittsburgh needs a theme. I think we need the spirit. We need the people to fix and maintain what they have, but we need some kind of incentive for them to do that. If they will maintain the roof, you'll take care of 75% of the problems. So even if that can be considered. But this is not a bad thing. There is a lot of work in it and a lot of people really, really did a lot of work on it. I ended up being pretty pleased with, and even made a couple of friends out of those eight or nine people, which is not too bad. But really and honestly, it's not too bad of a deal. I could live with it. As a matter of fact, we're still looking at if we can find somebody to buy another piece of property in town. And I think eventually our properties will be included in this and I wouldn't object to that part of it. But it is not a land grab or try to force somebody to do something. These are basically standards. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else for public input? Make sure I let everyone have a chance and then jump the gun here. All right. If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Item C, which is going to be removed anyway, actually, because it sounds like there are some things that still need taken care of with that, as Cameron talked to me about earlier. So, item C will be removed. Are there any other of the remaining items to be removed? If none, I will look for a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those, or, excuse me, roll call vote.
Finoway? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
McNeigh?
Aye.
Muntzow?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion passes. Special presentations. The 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the CAFR. Audrey Oderman of Meis Hauser &amp; Company PA, the city's auditing firm, will be present to review the city's 2017 audit and CAFR. Jamie?
Mayor Commissioners, as you mentioned, Audrey Oderman from the Meis Hauser Accounting Firm will be giving a brief synopsis of the 2017 audit and comprehensive annual financial report. Then you can ask questions as we go or wait till end or whatever. Audrey?
Good evening, everybody. I am going to start out on page one. So, on page one and two is our auditor's report. This report goes through and it talks about management's responsibilities, our responsibility as auditors. But what everybody probably wants to know is the opinion that we gave in the financial statements. And that is on the bottom of page one, coincidentally under the opinion title. So that sentence goes through and it talks about all the different components of these financial statements. And the opinion that we give in the financial statements is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that these financial statements can receive. Speaks to the work that you do, the direction that you give your staff, and the controls that they put in place throughout the year, not just when we're out here for the audit. I think this is an opportunity, and I probably repeat this every year, but Jamie really does an excellent job. We work with a lot of different vendors in Kansas City and when I mention we do the city of Pittsburgh, their comment usually is, "Well, they have Jamie." So, they're going to do a good job. So he really does an excellent job and I think he, he needs some accolades for all the work that he does throughout the year. Onto page two is our emphasis of matter paragraph. I wanted to highlight this particular paragraph because there is a restatement within the financial statements, but it wasn't, it wasn't an error that was made. It was actually a change in accounting principles or change in accounting pronouncements. So I'm going to highlight that when we get to the notes. But we always have to emphasize when there's a restatement and the reason why. So the reason why was just a change in the accounting processes that were put out by Gatsby. We go on to page three and through 14 is management's discussion and analysis. This is one of my favorite parts of these types of financial statements because it gives management an opportunity and really the only place in the financial statements to look at the prior year and look at the current year and really highlight events that occurred in the city throughout the year, maybe whether it be economic incentives or debt that was issued, large capital assets that were put in place. So this is a really good place to really look at what happened in the city financially through the 2017 year. If we go on to page 15 and 16, I want to, I always like to highlight these two pages because it's the only place, again, in the financial statements where the entire city is shown on two pages. If you're used to looking at business financial statements, this is really the closest thing that you're going to get. It's the only place where every single transaction is represented on just two pages. So it doesn't look exactly like a typical balance sheet, but the statement of net position would be the closest thing you're going to get to a balance sheet. And the statement of activities would be the closest thing you're going to get to a business income statement within these financial statements. So I'd really like to highlight those. They're full accrual. They show all of the city's debt and all of the city's assets on those two pages. There weren't a lot of substantial changes to the financial statements this year due to changes in accounting pronouncements. So I'd like to skip forward to page 28 and that's really where the note disclosures to the financial statements begin. There's a lot of information in these notes. They talk about accounting principles, the reporting entity of the government, your budget process, the taxation process. I'd like to highlight, the first note I'd like to highlight is on page 40. It's probably one of the more substantial notes in the financial statements. It shows all of the capital assets owned by the city, whether it be through the government activities or what we like to call business-type activities. Those are your utility funds. And so you'll see all the different assets by type and then the depreciation by function. If we go on to page 43, this is another substantial note within the financial statements and that's the long-term debt. This is a very lengthy note. It talks about all the different debt instruments that the city has issued, the payment on those debt instruments over the life of the various types of debt that the city has issued. If we go on to page 40, 53, sorry, we're talking about other post-employment benefits. And this is health insurance that you are required to provide for your retirees after they retire. It's something you have to provide per Kansas law. And this is where that restatement occurred. So how that liability is calculated and how it is distributed between the different type of, types of activities within the government changed according to an accounting pronouncement. So this note is going to look a little different than it did before. It's going to talk more about healthcare trends and discount rates of the actuary use. So it's just, it's a different note disclosure than what you've seen before and that's also what caused that restatement in the financial statements. That particular restatement note is on page 57. So you'll see a very brief explanation and how the restatement affected the various components of the financial statements. You'll see the public library over on the side. That's actually the city's component unit. And so we have disclosures for the library within these financial statements as well. If we go on to page 71, this is probably my second favorite part of these types of financial statements and that's the statistical section. There's a lot of really useful trend information in this part of the financial statement. So if you want to compare, you know, the balance sheet or the income and expenses from 2017 all the way back to 2008, this is where you're going to find all that information. There's also a lot of demographic statistics and it also talks about the different types of capital assets that the city has had over the last 10 years. So a lot of really interesting information within this portion of the financial statements. We're going to move on to page 94. This is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So any entity that spends more than $750,000 in federal aid has to have a special audit. We call it the single audit. So we go through and we look at the schedule and we determine, okay, we're going to audit at least 40% of these grants in a given year. This year, we selected the Section 8 Housing Audit and you'll see the results of that special audit over on page 96. Again, that particular audit received an unmodified opinion. So it's the highest opinion that that portion of the audit can receive. And you'll see also on the bottom that the city is considered a low-risk oddity. That is due to many different components, but a lot of it has to do with the internal controls that are put in place and the financial activity that happens throughout the year and the safeguards that are put in place throughout the year. If you go on to page 98, this is our second letter that we actually put within the financial statements. And this one talks about internal controls and the work we do over internal controls. We aren't allowed to give an opinion on internal controls per our professional standards, but we would, are required to tell you if we feel like there are any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. As you read through this, you're going to see that we did not note either of those two things. And if you go on to the top of page 99, you'll also see we didn't note any non-compliance with laws or regulations as they relate to the financial statements. So really a pretty boilerplate letter. There aren't any exceptions within that letter. If you go onto page 100, this talks about that single audit or the audit of the federal aid that I talked about. So this particular letter is going to give that opinion again on that part of the audit and again talk about some control work that we did over just that portion of the audit as well. You have any questions for me?
It was a great read. Thanks for putting it together.
Yeah, I'm glad you liked it. Jamie does a lot of the work. Again, we put those three letters in, but the rest of the financial statement is yours.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. It's great to hear what good work the city is, well, in particular Jamie is doing for us. We're glad that he's around and doing all the things that he's doing. So it's good to hear from an outside source like, yeah, you're doing the right thing.
You just need to receive a profile.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Department report. Community Development and Housing. Director of Community Development and Housing Becky Gray will provide an update on activities within her department.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about what's happening in the housing department. I'm going to leave community development to the side because we're going to be talking about those downtown standards here in a minute. And I just want to focus on what we are doing to help, come on in, to help our low-income residents maintain quality, affordable housing. So within the housing office, there's three main funding streams that we use to do such. One is the HUD Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's a program that a household is eligible on based upon their income. If they're eligible and they meet certain requirements regarding eligibility, then they receive a voucher. They can take that voucher to any, any free market rental in our community. If the landlord agrees to accept partial payment of that rent from our office, then our housing quality specialist goes to the house and inspects it to make sure that it meets minimum quality standards. This is all health and safety standards. After that, we enter into kind of a three-way agreement. There's a lease between the landlord and the tenant, an agreement between the tenant and the HUD office, and an agreement between the HUD office and the landlord. And then we subsidize that tenant's rent, again, based on their income. So sometimes our subsidy is, you know, less than $50. Sometimes it's the entire rent. That program alone brings in $1,473,000 to our community that gets paid out directly to the landlords. That doesn't get absorbed in administrative overhead. That doesn't get, we don't use it to pay for our building or our lights or any of that. That's actual transfer of money from the federal government to our local property owners so that they can maintain affordable housing for our residents. In addition to that, we use another federal stream called Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, TBRA, we like to call it. That can be used, very similar to Section 8. It was actually designed to fill the waiting gap. Most communities have a very long wait to get that Section 8 voucher. We don't. We have, we're a fairly efficient process at our office. Our wait is down to two to three months at the very most. And so we designed our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program to pay deposit assistance because Section 8 doesn't do that. It can pay a rent once you get in, but the TBRA can pay for deposit upfront to help people get in. So annually, we bring in $107,000 that, again, is paid directly to landlords as deposit assistance. It's considered a grant to the tenants. So should they receive that deposit back when they move out, that's their money then to take to their next location to use as a deposit as well. So there's some incentive then to be a good tenant when you're using that program. In addition to that, we have the Emergency Solutions Fund. This also starts at the federal government and goes through the state. This is homeless money. So we use it for primarily three pieces. One is a day shelter at the Wesley House. So the ESG money helps support that operation where people who are experiencing homelessness can access showers, food, laundry machines, and most importantly, case management services, access to the internet, safe place to store their belongings and valuables. And then there's other supportive services that exist at Wesley House that really can help, like help getting your IDs, social security card, help getting into the workforce development programs, et cetera. The other, one of the other places we use it is called homeless prevention. This is a pretty valuable slice of money. So homeless prevention typically comes into play after a very cold winter when people get behind on their utility bills and the utility companies can't cut off service during the winter. So you get behind on your utility bills, that timeline ends and then we can cut off your utilities. Well, we all know you can't live in a house without utilities and sometimes making up arrears on those utility bills is out of the reach of people who aren't earning a living wage. And so we can use homeless prevention money to help pay off the utility arrears or rent arrears and those, those types of things that help just bridge a gap. It's a lot less expensive to bridge that gap than it is to move an entire household. The last piece we use ESG money for is rapid rehousing. And that is for people who are literally experiencing homelessness. That money can be used to pay utility and deposit assistance and first, I think, up to, up to six months' rent in some cases. To qualify for that, a person, again, must be literally homeless and must have a housing stability plan. So they work with one of the case managers at Wesley House that says, "After we do this for you," right, "after we use these subsidies for you, how are you going to be stable in your housing after that? What's the plan? Do you have a job? Are you signing up for Section 8?" Those kind of things. That ESG grant money is just under $170,000. So if you put that all together, that's $1,749, almost $50,000, $1,750,000 that comes in through that department and again, doesn't stay and get used in utilities or administrative overhead, but actually goes directly to other members of our community. The income limitations to qualify for these programs is 50% of our area median income. So for a household of three, that's $27,000. So anybody receiving these subsidies is existing on a wage of less than $27,000 a year. The only difference is with the ESG grant, they also have to be literally homeless or about to be homeless. So if we put all those numbers together, Section 8 houses typically 350 households. The Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, we serve about 35 households a year. And with the Emergency Solutions Grant, that's about 140 individuals. Nearly 40% of them were children. I think that's kind of an important thing for us to remember as a community. So that's a total of about 5% of the total occupied households in our community receive some type of rental subsidy or support through the housing office. In addition to that, there's two smaller programs that we haven't really broadcast a lot. Those are, these are local programs that we've designed ourselves using an old bucket of money that's referred to as the Presbyterian Funds. This is a, these are programmed for low-income homeowners. The first is a rehabilitation loan. So this is if somebody needs to do some significant work to their house. A lot of times we're seeing it being made handicap accessible. They can borrow from that fund. We put a lien on the property and they pay it back zero interest over time. And the other is an emergency repair. And that's so, things like furnaces and water heaters are typically what we're repairing. Sometimes roofs. We've heard Larry mention how important the roofs are. So those are, that's the broad bucket of what the housing office and the wonderful staff that's working down there does that got a good audit this year. That was kind of fun to hear too. If you have any questions about, about the department's activities, I'd be happy to answer them. That was Fast and Furious.
I was lucky you have a full agenda.
They do a lot of work down there. Yep. Thank you.
Appreciate you doing the work.
Thank you.
Becky.
Be up here shortly. All right. Moving into the main agenda, consider the following. Consider Resolution Number 1203, adopting the downtown design standards for Broadway-facing buildings between First Street and 10th Street. Becky and Company.
That's right. So I'm just going to be up here for a moment to introduce Britten Brenner. You may recall that I've had an intern in our department this semester. So Britten Brenner is a Pitt State student. She's also the vice president of the SGA or was. I think she just resigned that post as she moves towards other things in life. But when she came on board to work in the Community Development Department, we were brainstorming what kind of activities could she tackle in the semester that she's here. I want to back up a little bit before to understand how we even got to the idea of having a project like this. You might remember a time when we did not have a downtown advisory board and we had a group of citizens that were meeting on a regular basis and being fairly, voicing their opinions about wanting to do some historic preservation of the buildings downtown. They turned into the downtown advisory board. From there, we talked about alternatives to historic preservation. Historic preservation by definition is very onerous and can be kind of costly. We want to see buildings maintained and we want to see the structural integrity of those buildings downtown maintained, but we also don't want to put any roadblocks in front of property owners. We started talking about what is called form-based code. We started talking about what is called form-based codes. This is an alternative zoning approach where you look at the form of a street, the way it looks, the way it's physically built, and maintain that appearance as, as you move to, as you move to, forward with renovations and restorations and, and new development. And that, too, was a little bit too onerous. It was, it, it can be very, very specific. And so the Downtown Advisory Board had suggested, why don't we just come up with a set of standards that we all agree are best practices to maintain the look, the feel, and the integrity, most importantly, of our downtown community. So when Britten showed up and said she wants to do an internship, I said, well, here's a fun thing for you to tackle. And, and we changed the scope of this project from being the entire downtown district, which is, is pretty significant, to just the forward, the, the Broadway-facing parcels between First and Tenth. And that felt like it could be accomplished in a semester. So with that background, I'm going to turn it over to Britten and she can talk about the process that she went through to get to the point where we're sitting right now. Good?
Thank you, Becky. So you've seen the document, but I want to tell you and explain to you how we got to where we are today with that document. And so like Becky said, it started with people asking about it and talking about it and thinking about what we could do to make our community better. Came in and had no idea what any of these things looked like, but with the help of everybody at City Hall and the Infrastructure Committee and the Downtown Advisory Board, we were able to wrap our minds around the concept and move forward. So it started in February. As you can see on this timeline, the Downtown Advisory Board met and we kind of cleared with them that this was okay for me to start doing and me to start talking to the, their committees about and get the ball moving. By March fifteenth, the document had, the first draft had been completed. And so the Infrastructure Committee was able to meet. And we went through that document line by line, looking through, we wanted to focus on infrastructure needs in our community. That was the most important thing. And so how can we write this document in a way that clearly addresses those needs and maintains our community the way we know it should be? And so like Larry said, we did have a series of meetings, not quite three a week, but it did feel like it there for a while. And so we started going through line by line. And we were able to make recommendations. The Downtown Advisory Board was able to take a look at those in their March meeting and kind of see what they thought. They continued to give us a thumbs up to keep moving. So we moved into public input because we knew the community needed to be a part of this and we wanted to get people's input. On April fourth, I sent a hundred and thirty-two letters to every property and business owner in the affected area, letting them know what was happening and giving them links to a survey online to fill out, as well as a link to the document online to look through. During that same time, from April fourth to April nineteenth, a survey was on, available online for anyone in the community or with internet access to fill out. And we were able to get quite a bit of feedback from that. It was put on Facebook by the Downtown Advisory Board and just word of mouth as well. The link was able to be shared. On April seventeenth, then, we held an open forum at 602 North Broadway. It's one of the buildings that are being renovated right now. And we were able to put big posters with the plan all over the walls and people were able to walk through and edit, make their own edits on the papers themselves. After that, I, we rolled them all up and brought them to our Infrastructure Committee where we went through every single edit, line by line, and talked about everything that needed to be done. I took the survey results and put them in an Excel sheet and we went through every single response that anyone put. Every word that was written on that survey was talked about in that meeting. And so we were able to make a final recommendation after that. We sent that to the Downtown Advisory Board to go over at their April meeting. They unanimously decided to approve that recommendation and now we're here before you, talking to you about it as well. And so that's kind of how we've gotten to where we are. Becky and I are more than happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the document. Thank you for your time.
One question I have, well, one of many, is you sent out these surveys. What kind of response did you get number-wise? You said you sent out a hundred and sixty-some.
I sent out a hundred and thirty-two letters.
A hundred and thirty-two.
And then we sent it out on Facebook and just broadcasted it as best as we could via social media. We received just under forty responses. I think right around forty.
Forty responses, okay.
How many did you have attend the open forum?
Forty to fifty. It was a two-hour come and go. So people were able to come and make their edits and then ask questions and talk.
Well, it's obvious a lot of work has gone into this. And I guess my confusion is the document states that these are recommendations. So by, by adopting them in an ordinance, to me, that says that there's really no enforcement on our part. And maybe that's just my ignorance, being new to the commission. I, I really don't understand, um, you know, the mechanism to enforce if we're saying they're recommendations.
I'm in the same boat.
Talk about that for a second.
Okay.
Appreciate, appreciate the question, though. This is, you're, you're actually approving a resolution, all right, which basically is an indication of the commission's intent, all right? It doesn't have the force of law. This is not an ordinance.
Okay.
We were not actually creating a law, all right? But it is, it is, in essence, a policy statement. You're saying this is, this is a, this is a standard that we approve of and that we think should be followed. There is, there's no penalty for it. There's no, there's no legal basis for, for, for the city to take any action against this. We'll put a process in place for, for this. It is, it is more of a reference and a guidebook than it is a, 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 a legal document that, that people have to adhere to.
Britten introduced me to a term that she learned today called a gentle.
Gentrification.
Gentrification. Or gentrification.
This is gentrification.
Gentrification is introducing ideas slowly so that it's relatively easy. So rather going straight to form-based codes or historic preservation, the idea is to say, we have a new standard that we as a community have agreed to adopt and, and then we start holding each other accountable for it. The other place that this is going to be very valuable is the developers that we are currently speaking with regarding downtown construction. And there's at least three or four that I can think of. We can, when we set up a development plan with those people or those entities, we can reference these standards in that development plan and say, it is our expectation as a community that you, as someone coming in to build new, can meet these standards so that, so that you're cohesive to the rest of our downtown community.
And I think it's important to note that people who are coming in and looking at the downtown, looking at putting money and investment into downtown are actually interested in the, in these. They want these design standards because they want their investment to be maintained over the years as well. So this is not, we don't consider this anything but really helping with economic development. It really is something that, that people are asking for when we, when we meet, when we meet with them.
Just for instance, Kansas Teachers Credit just cleaned up their facade. How would we have changed what they did?
Yeah, why don't you?
In the document, that would, so in the rehabilitation, it doesn't really, it talks about facades, but just making sure that approved materials are used when rehabilitating facades. So making sure that if you're covering up a brick with stucco, you're using stucco that isn't going to disintegrate that brick on the inside. Making sure that the structure is still going to stand and that the infrastructure is maintained. So as far as the Kansas Teachers Credit Union, nothing would have been changed. What they did is okay.
Their design and?
Yeah. The infrastructural pieces of that are appropriate and are strong and that is the main goal of this document.
I just spent a few days in Oxford, Mississippi, which is the home of Ole Miss. And walking around that square and seeing no buildings that jar out at you because they're all cohesive. They don't look like a theme park, but they, they sit gently with each other. And that's what I hope we can get out of this.
Can you walk us through? So you have a standard. Say this thing passes, we have a standard, and then eventually we have a development agreement that somebody brings before the city commission because they want some dollars. So what, what, when does the standard become fleshed out? I mean, how does it, what committees does it go to? Who's the, I mean, is it everything just, hey, development agreement and give it to the commissioners? Or, there's got to be a process.
So it would first go through the Downtown Advisory Board. So the Downtown Advisory Board would kind of be the keeper of the, of these downtown standards. They would review the plan that's, that's being proposed and they would compare it to the standards. And again, it's recommendations. So the Downtown Advisory Board could say, thanks for building here. We recommend these modifications to your plan in order to suit, both meet the needs of the document, but also to suit the purpose of the cohesiveness of the downtown environment. And then, and move, that most people investing in a community want to be good neighbors. And so they understand those recommendations and, and it's particularly backed by a resolution from a governing body.
But here again, it, this, this is really a recommendation at this point in time. There's no teeth to it.
Then it goes to the P and Z? I mean, how does it make its way here?
If, if it, if it was a project that was required to go to P and Z initially, it would go there next. If it's not required to go to P and Z, then it would.
And so anybody on that board could weigh in on, well, hey, it doesn't have the standards or it does have the standards, I don't think it should, but that's where, that's, I just want to make sure they're not getting, hey, let's have a three-on-two to sword fight over what kind of stucco is a, is a, you know? That's not what they're here to do. And that's what, you've set up a process that will make sure the people that are on our boards are going to be the ones that are making any recommendation that would come up to this group so that be, not easy decisions, but makeable decisions is our goal.
I guess from my perspective, and I appreciate all the work and, and the involvement, I would like a little more time for us, maybe in a, in a work session, to, to really talk about this because if we just, I feel that if we just make a resolution tonight without the process and without the full understanding, all of your work will be for naught. And I think we really need to, if, if we decide this is the way we want to go, we need to create a process that it can be, all your work can be successful. So that would, that, I guess, would be my suggestion, that we maybe table this and schedule some time where we can kind of really digest it and have time for the city to determine, you know, what is the role if they're just recommendations.
Sitting up here for the number of years that I have, we have, we have kicked this can down the road, uh, time and time again. Never came up with anything quite as substantial a, as this. I have no issue with studying it more. I don't know, uh, really what's going to come out of it except maybe feeling better about voting for it.
Well, I mean, once upon a time, we had facade grants. I mean, what, are there, as we look at this, are there opportunities to assist those business owners again? I, you know?
I, I could say something to that. We've seen the results of the facade grants from inside out of the buildings. There are some buildings, one, one that the, the city's land bank just took ownership of, that did benefit from a facade grant. It looks great from the street. On the inside, there's water coming through. So we have been actually, I, I, I went to the EDAC last month and presented them with the concept of low or no-interest loans for structural integrity to the buildings. So if we could assist property owners with roofs and appropriate treatment of bricks and tuck-pointing so that that building has integrity regardless of who owns it in the future, that would perhaps then free that owner up with their own money to do the facades and the beautification.
I'd like the sound of that, Becky, because, like you said, that facade grant made it look nice for whatever business was in there. But when you go on inspections above and below that and behind it, like you said, I think the structural integrity should be the, what we can help them with. You know, and, and I like listening to what Larry said and what Tim said. You know, I, I like people coming forward and, and talking about their issues. But I think somebody that invests in a building downtown and puts a lot of money in it are going to expect that their neighbors are going to have the same kind of interest and standards that they've invested in. So I think this is a good thing. And, and I do like that thought of the structural integrity of the building because you can put lipstick on a pig and it's still a pig, you know? So, I mean, that's an old saying, but, you know, I think that's the thing that we need to look at. Because that's where the money's at. What is it going to cost more than maybe the facade?
That's where it costs the taxpayers as well to have code enforcement go in and fire, et cetera, so.
Well, I definitely, uh, fall in line with what these two people just said about, we need to stabilize these buildings. That's the initial place that I think our money should be going. And I know when we used to have facade grants, we'd, we'd give the money away for an awning and help with the, before the awning got rolled down, they were out of business and, and, you know, and.
Rolled up their awning and.
They rolled up their awning.
Well, and maybe looking at these standards and segregating in between what are safety issues and more an aesthetic, you know?
What I, I feel, maybe Mr. Fields could speak to this. I feel like during those infrastructure conversations, that was the two sides of the room. There was the structural integrity and then there was the aesthetics. And I feel like they found a pretty good balance. When paint and treatment is referred to in there, there's a, a very specific phrase that Britten used.
Approved products, which would be their planning and zoning and building services.
Because as building materials continue to evolve and get better and better, the, what was good in the sixties isn't necessarily good now. So the idea is that, that if you're going to paint a brick wall, it should be an approved type of paint for that type of wall. So it's, the, the paints and, and some of those treatments that you see mentioned in there, it is about the integrity of that structure.
So if we pass this resolution today, how much of, of an active document does it become? So if we think of other things or other things come up, or what will be able to add to this? Or will it be a living document or is this done deal?
So I think that's the intent. I'm looking at Jake because he knows more about documents than I do.
You can and should add to this document as, as things evolve.
And I see its use being on the Community Development landing page. I use that webpage a lot when I'm talking with people who are looking to invest here. I send them links to that page and push it out there and they can get a lot of information about our community based on that. So if, if I have, Britten and I have entertained several people who are looking to invest downtown and if we can send them the link to these design standards so that they know that we have expectations and they know what to expect, they can have a more informed decision.
Thinking about that phase where you send this document that you're asking us to act on to a developer, I understand that they would feel like the city is, has their interest at, at heart. But I'm not sure it doesn't come off as too, too, well, for lack of a better term, heavy-handed.
I, I can understand that perspective. I've had, the experience that I've had with developers has been to the contrary. The first thing they ask me for is our master plan, our comprehensive plan. And then the next thing, if it's a downtown, they do ask for what are your, either your form-based codes or your standards for construction downtown. So it's something they're looking for because they want to know if their product fits. And then again, to, to protect their investment, they want to know that their neighbor is not going to do something too far removed.
Becky, what percentage of our downtown owners are absentee?
I don't think I have that statistic in my brain. I think that out of the, the letters that you sent, so that's not all of the downtown district, that's just the ones that the design standards apply to, the vast majority were Pittsburgh residents.
Yeah. I would say that maybe ten to fifteen were of the hundred and thirty-two letters that I sent. The rest were community members or people, members of citizen boards that took the survey out of their own interest.
I think my feeling at this point is that this is a really good starting place, that even if it's not a hundred percent what we want or sure what we're looking for, like, it is very clear that a ton of work has gone into this and it's super impressive. So good on you guys and all the stuff that you've been doing. Like, this thing is awesome. Even if it's not, like, we're still trying to figure out what we're going to do with this. I feel like setting it aside. I feel like setting it aside doesn't really do it justice. Like, I think we need to address it now and have something in front of us and that it is something that can evolve moving forward. But we need something. Like, we, a lot of work has already been put into it. There's no need to push that out of the way, I feel like.
I see it that way myself. I, I, I think we've, we've kicked the can down the, down the street long enough, and this is a, seems like a professionally put-together document that is not set in stone, doesn't really have any teeth. It's all suggestive at this point in time, and it can be modified as we move along.
Yeah, I'd, I'd suggest, it sounds like you're getting towards a consensus, but to, maybe to address Dawn's point. So the downtown advisory board meets all the time. Obviously, Larry, they meet every, every other day.
Times a week.
Or three times a week. So I, I think maybe to vet what you're talking about. Tim's here, there's some people here, not the usual suspects, but the people that I would expect that are paying attention to when boards meet and going in and having input. So if you do pass it out, the idea is this thing, anybody that felt left out or maybe didn't have a say, obviously, the people that were in the room may feel like they won or lost the discussion, but they had their day. But for anybody that feels like, hey, what is this? I haven't heard of it, I missed the memo, I didn't get the, the... You get them to the downtown advisory board, let them know this is a working document. This is something that we're, you, you always have that option, Dawn, is what I'm saying. If, if you get to, because I do understand the idea of, it's, it's all, feels like policy even if it isn't an ordinance. And that we want to make sure that people understand that we have these advisory boards so you can regularly input on transportation concepts and building and, and development ideas. And so it's not, today isn't the end of anything. Today's the beginning of something. And that, that process is very open and, and everybody, I, I mean, Tim made great comments, and he's downtown, and, you know, you got to respect that people have a voice, and it's all about trying to appease them. But that may help you, Dawn, I don't know if it does or not.
I like what you said, and what you guys said about the advisory board. They've made some suggestions, and people have been involved in these. But then, the next, the planning and zoning still would be involved. So, you know, the advisory board makes the suggestions, then it goes to planning and zoning before it ever comes to us to act on. So, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's a, it's a good concept.
But the planning and, the way we're approaching this, planning and zoning can't hold them accountable to these.
That's correct.
So this is just a suggestion, okay.
You're exactly right. I mean, we have got, we are going to bring you a land use plan to consider. There's a lot of pieces to make in this city not fall over in the next 20 years like it has for the last 15. And this is an important piece. But there's bigger pieces as far as a comprehensive plan and P and Z, their, their role in enforcing that plan, whereas they're not really enforcing this, they're just considering these recommendations. And those are two different things.
Are there any other questions? I move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and, and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Great work.
Great work, Britten.
Now let's implement it.
Yeah, now let's do something about it, right?
Make it happen. All right, item B, ordinance number G-1281. Consider ordinance number G-1281 creating Article 6 in Chapter 62 of the Pittsburgh City Code for the purpose of creating a sustainability advisory committee and determining the membership duties and functions of said sustainability advisory committee. So this is something that I had been thinking about for a little while, and I, if you were paying attention during the State of the City address, I had brought up, Sarah was talking to me about it afterwards. We talked to Darren, and we wanted to, I wanted to see, made happen. I feel like we're in the 21st century and having some kind of feedback mechanism, being able to look at what it is that we're doing and determine, is this the most efficient and sustainable way of doing things, was pretty important. And that such a thing, giving, giving citizens an opportunity to input into that process and really taking a look at all of the ways that the city operations could be touched by that, which, as we, when we were meeting about this, was, it became clear that it's a lot of different things, as is reflected in the ordinance, that it touches on everything from building design to energy to land use to farming and agriculture, to all kinds of different things. And that it posed the possibility of really providing a lot of opportunities and an opportunity for reflection for us that maybe we didn't have in place already. So.
I think, you know, the, the process was kind of fun because sustainability, like you said, it came up in your speech, and we were all like, there goes the mayor. Saying something.
There goes the mayor.
For people to know about. But then, you know, Sarah showed up to our meeting and had really researched it and brought in a bunch of great examples from Lawrence, and we had Henry there. So we were kind of drafting some of this as, you know, on the spot. And I think it really helped. So there's been a lot, I just want people to know, there's been a lot of research. We, you know, as we do at the city, we steal good ideas from other communities that are already doing it right. We don't have to invent everything. So I think what, what's before you is a, a pretty good start to an advisory board. Obviously, on the staff side, we're comfortable with it. These are all things that we constantly are challenged with anyway. And, and always having smart people with time on their hands in the community that are willing to look at some of these and steer us in a certain direction is always useful. So I appreciate you bringing it up, and, and thanks for meeting with us. And I think Henry did a great job of drafting something to consider. And obviously, will help answer any questions from the rest of the commissioners about what this means or what this could mean or what this calls for.
I think as an advisory board, it's, it, it can be an important tool for us to use to, to bring information to these different departments and hopefully keep pushing us in the right direction.
Did Henry draft the perfect ordinance? There's nothing else?
I don't know, we had a correction, so maybe...
I caught that one, we just didn't tell Cam.
Oh, yeah.
I did. I read stuff. It's not the...
I move to approve the ordinance. So make sure I remember.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, am I just navigating away from the page? Item C, letter agreement. Consider approval of a letter agreement for the city manager for calendar year 2018.
I'm not speaking to this.
Henry, how do we need to go about explaining?
Well, this, this agreement would change the current compensation for, for Mr. Hall up to the maximum allowed under the current salary ordinance, which is $145,000 a year.
I'll make a comment. Five months ago, we came to an unanimous decision that we could not afford to keep giving these yearly raises for the amount of raises they are. We came to the consensus that we would put the city manager on the same rotation as other employees when we could afford to pay 2% every two years. Like I said, that was a unanimous decision, and nothing's changed for me in five months' time. So I'm standing on what I voted on five months ago.
Well, and for some context for the rest of us. So we had voted five months ago, as Chuck said, to not provide a raise for Darren. But with the new commission and given the, I mean, anybody that's been paying even remote attention to what's been going on in the city, it's very clear that good things are happening, and it's not an accident. And in order to maintain that momentum and direction, the majority of us felt that this, while out of step certainly with the way the rest of city staff are paid, and that is something that we hope to address, not to speak for the other commissioners, but I certainly hope to address at some point in the near future so that there's some clearer expectation and something better than a couple bucks every couple years. That in order to maintain this, that we need to make sure that we have the best leadership working for us here at the city. And it's pretty clear, I think, that we have that in Darren and the people that he's brought on board. So I think that this increase reflects that perspective, that we want to see the good things that we've had happen continue to happen. And, well, Darren has been making this happen. So if there are any other comments?
I, I want to make a comment to address what Chuck said about it being a unanimous decision when we did that. It was. I felt lousy about it when I voted for that. And I am happy that we are able to, at least in some small way, rectify it.
I respect your comments.
Patrick.
Patrick. I don't ever feel lousy the way I vote, I vote for what I think is...
Maybe you're smarter than I am.
No, I wouldn't say that. But I do respect your opinion, and I vote for what I think is best for the all. And that's why I'm staying with the vote I made.
I also think it's important to keep our salaries competitive. And I echo Jeremy's comment that I think it's probably time to look at, you know, to do a formal review of, of how we award salary increases and how often, especially as we progress within our community. But for me, this was about, number one, rewarding a city manager who, you know, last year was probably one of the best years we had, but also keeping our salary for that position competitive.
Are there any other further comments before we proceed to vote?
None, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. Non-agenda reports and requests. The bi-monthly budget review. Director of Finance Jamie Clarkson will provide the April 30th, 2018 bi-monthly budget review.
Get her loaded up here on the computer.
So that it's not coming up tonight. It'll be like tabled in the future.
Budget review for the month of April 2018. We do these every two months. Last one I did was through February of 2018. April 33%, 1/30 of the year is gone. Everything's in green, which is good. Nothing's really out of kilter that I've noticed yet. Everything's coming in just like I expected. We started out with a 12 million, 12.6 million at the beginning of the year, and we're currently at 14.7 million in the bank. One thing I am a little curious about is our, our sales tax collections. We had positive growth for January, February, and March. And then the, the, the collections I received in April, compared to the, the collections through April of 2017, are now down 1, 1.4%. And I don't know, sometimes the state, I don't know if they just don't get all the collected money and send out. I'll find out this month whether it's going to be a trend or not when I get it on the 25th or so of May. The gaming revenue is, so far in 2018, is averaging $29,640 a month, which is close, I think, to the, the original estimate of 30,000 a month when they did their revenue estimates for, when they first, you know, came out with the casino concept and everything. So that's, that's performing well. Has anybody got any questions on anything?
I have a comment about this gaming income. And that is just a small amount, well, not a small amount, but it's not, it's just only a portion of what's coming to our communities.
Right, right.
From the county and, and what they're donating to various organizations around the community.
Yes, they make several donations to various things, like CTEC and, and other things. Even to our fireworks, city fireworks, they donate some funds to that as well. And also, there's, you know, there's, there's hotel tax, and there's, and there's sales tax being generated there as well. And it's, it's bringing people who don't live here into the community. I notice there's a lot of Missouri traffic around, Missouri plates around that area.
They celebrated one-year anniversary out there yet?
Yeah.
So that's pretty good that they...
Just in April.
In a year's time, they've pretty much met their expectations and maybe they might even surpass them. That's good.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
Looks good, Jimmy.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. All right, any other non-agenda reports or requests?
We do have one. We were fortunate today to get some news from the, in the aviation world as far as a project. So we thought, rather than wait two weeks, we'd go ahead and address them on agenda. So Cameron, go ahead.
What you have before you is an agreement with the FAA. When we did the extension of the runway, they had to move the lighting system down to meet, meet the new end. So in that, they have to go through and do a flight check to make sure that everything's lined up the way that it should before they can turn it on and make it fully operational. What's before you is just an agreement, the FAA does the check itself. They've got a separate agreement in that for the reimbursement. It was originally part of the project, so this has already been, payment's already been approved. This is just getting the okay to enter into that agreement. I believe it, we had in our project estimated about 15,000. What they have estimated right now is 12,000. So it's well within the budget of what you guys have seen before.
Those questions, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, or moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Any other non-agenda reports or requests?
I think we're good.
All right, if not, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.